Meeting to order. This is the July 6th, 2022 Corleville Planning and Zoning Meeting, and it is now called to order. Can I get a roll call, please? Fessler? Fessler?
Yes.
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Here.
Aaronz?
Here.
Winman?
Here.
Friedhoff?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Okay, and now we are just going to take a brief moment of silence in honor of Sergeant Williams. All right, and moving forward, do we have any corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Friedhoff.
Second.
Seconded by Aaronz. We will now vote on approving the agenda. All those who approve say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried seven to zero. Do we have any corrections to the meeting minutes from the June 1st, 2022 meeting? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 1st, 2022 meeting? Moved by Fessler?
Second.
Seconded by Winman. We will now vote on approving the minutes from the June 1st, 2022 meeting. All those who approve say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried seven to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five. We have a public hearing requested by Angel Properties, Inc. to recommend rezoning of Auditor's Plat Number 20, Lot 3, from C2 Arterial Commercial District to CPUD 2 Commercial Planned Unit Development 2 District, and to consider approval of the PUDB site plan. I will now open the public hearing on this item.
Good evening, John Marner with MMS Consultants representing the applicant. Our intent is to place a Scooters Coffee Shop on the site with two drive-through lanes, and then it merges back into one after you exit the pass through the drive-through window and then exit back to the northeast and enter First Avenue. Unlike the other, most of the other Scooters locations that you may have seen in the area in North Liberty and Iowa City, this one actually has inside seating. It also has a patio outside, so there's some patio seating provided as well. We, Dave's got the exterior elevation, some samples up that you can see there. We've added additional landscaping on the south side of the property where the drive-through is to try to provide some layered screening from the property to the south. And we tried to dress up where we're tearing out the existing concrete on the east side along First Avenue and build up that landscaping and really make that attractive from First Avenue as well. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Was that previously a gas station site I saw in there?
It is currently a gas station site.
So is there any tank removals or?
They will have to remove tanks and then dispose of them and abandon everything else on site that's there for the functioning gas station right now. They'll have to handle that, all that as part of demolition process.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no others moving forward, I will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of rezoning to the CPUD 2 District?
So moved.
Moved by Aaronz?
Second.
Seconded by Friedhoff. Any discussion?
I would just add to what John said that the exterior consists primarily of combination of stone, fiber cement, engineered wood, glass, and metal panels and trim. City staff has reviewed the project, and the zoning can be considered consistent with the Corleville Community Plan, and the proposed PUDB site plan complies with the site development standards set forth in city code. And that's all I have.
Question, Dave. How will stormwater be handled on this site?
This is going to be a fee in lieu, since it's a former gas station. We actually are going to want to prevent water from infiltrating on this project.
Great.
Which doesn't appear to be much of a change from its current use.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. We will now vote on the approval of rezoning to the CPUD 2 District. Could I have a roll call? Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaronz?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Holderness?
Seconded.
Seconded by Aaronz. Any further discussion on this one?
Dave, will there still be two driveways coming off of First Avenue into this location?
No, I'm sorry, I pulled the wrong plan out.
Yeah, it merges down to one.
We will just have the one driveway up north on the site here. And then this is going to be curbed. Which is actually, at this time at least, until potential surrounding land might develop, this is the preferred preference of the city and our city engineers that we reduce one of the drives on this project.
Anything else? All right, we will now vote on the approval of the PUDB site plan. Roll call, please. Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaronz?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. All right, we will now move on to Agenda Item Number Six. We have a public hearing requested by Rail Development Corporation to recommend the rezoning part of Lot 7 Folsom Subdivision from C2 Arterial to Commercial District and 12 Light Industrial District to the CPUD 1 Commercial Planned Unit Development 1 District, and to consider approval of the PUDB site plan and preliminary plat. I will now open the public hearing on this item.
Chairperson Taylor, if it's okay, I'd like to go over my staff report first just to outline some of the basics on this prior to the development team addressing any other points that I may have missed or something that they might want to elaborate on.
Okay.
Thank you. So this request would establish a master development plan for the Gather Iowa Project. Gather Iowa is the redevelopment of approximately 12 acres of the southeast Commercial District subarea. The subarea is in the Corleville Community Plan.
Dave, could you pull that map up just so we have a reference point?
Yeah.
That map was very helpful. There you go.
And I'll also pull this up. Here to give you general reference. This is the southeast commercial area district right here. The subarea plans are challenged sites in highly visible areas identified for potential growth, which would provide important economic, aesthetic, and regional benefits if improved upon or redeveloped. The southeast Commercial District subarea serves as the premier gateway into Corleville from the University of Iowa. The area is generally commercial but also has some residential and industrial uses. The community plan describes the area as auto-dependent with dated strip malls and poor site design and an overabundance of curb cuts and surface parking. Redevelopment of this area will require expansive coordinated planning and design in order to strengthen connections to the University of Iowa and region. This area will also serve as one of Corleville's premier gateways. Integral to this effort are the following key concepts that are found in our community plan: Strengthening connections to the University of Iowa, signage and branding, pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, access management, network enhancements, and aesthetic improvements. City staff has reviewed the PUDA master site development plan and finds the development includes and improves upon all key concepts outlined in the southeast Commercial District subarea in the Corleville Community Plan, and the preliminary plat conforms with the requirements for appropriation filing outlined in city code. I would also mention that this entire area is in the 100-year floodplain, and the area is part of this redevelopment. Fill will be brought in, all new infrastructure will go in, and buildings will be elevated a minimum of one foot above the base flood elevation. So this will have some important flooding improvements as well in this particular area. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeff Rath, I'm the civil engineer of record. I'm from Coggin, Iowa. Thank you, Dave, for going through that. Can you go to C101, please? I'll do an overview of kind of the overall layout. I think it's farther up here. PDF. One with the black hatching on it. There you go. As Dave showed before, we are essentially raising the entire property, tearing up the roads, the majority of the utility lines. Also relocating Second Avenue over farther to the west side. That most likely going to be a signalized intersection that gets it a little bit farther away from our, you know, the First Avenue and Highway 6 intersection, and that would be the public right-of-way First Avenue. The First Street alignment will be kept, but once again, we'll be tearing out most of the road, replacing the utilities in there. The First Street and Second Avenue, since they are the, you know, kind of public right-aways, they will house our hike and bike trails, which will connect to the east and to the north. I mean, I just drove around today, you see lots of people biking. I'm an avid biker, so I do like this going through the site. We looked at some different parking configurations and tried to minimize any dooring of people that are going to be riding their bicycles through this area as well. It's happened to me. Not fun. As part of this, we also have a bus stop on First Avenue, and there's also a couple other loading zones around the main part of the building, which our architect will talk about that later. This plan, existing site is pretty well overdeveloped. Parking and buildings and stuff, we are actually creating some more green space on this site than is currently there. As far as utilities go, we are planning on doing, we've worked with the city engineer, and we're planning on all-new sanitary, water, and storm, and then just connecting up to the best points that we coordinated with the city on those. There is a lot of overhead electric going down First Street as well as just diagonal across the site. We've already started that coordination to get those lines removed and relocated along the south property line, and then some areas that'll actually go underground. And then the routing would be on the east side of Lot 3 eventually. We'll still have the overhead connection across First Avenue, but we're in the early stages of coordinating that, but we've got great feedback from America on that. Also, there's a major gas line going through First Street that does not actually serve the area. It's a kind of an interconnect for a long one. We've also coordinated with them to make sure we're keeping all our depths and clearances away from them. As far as stormwater management, he alluded to it. We are sitting in a floodplain, so as a civil engineer, I want to make sure everybody's high and dry. Most of the roads will stay down to where they are, so we don't have any, or at least minimize the impact of any additional flooding. We're also working with your engineering consultant, and they're taking, we've given them our plans, and if they've got any feedback that need to change the design based on their modeling, we could more than happy to incorporate that in. We are parked, we've got plenty of parking, and it is spread out quite everywhere, so it should be easy to get in and out of all the buildings. Plus, we've got an entire parking garage that, shall talk about that as well. That's really it from kind of a civil point of view. It's really kind of a straightforward project, and we've worked well with staff on trying to make everybody happy on this. Does anybody have any questions kind of on the civil portion?
So the Lot 2, that'd be just on the west side of the Walgreens, the current Walgreens down there?
Yes, and we are maintaining their current access in and out of the property. The only kind of thing we are closing off, it does look like people kind of shoot through that.
Yeah, unsafe.
Oh, yeah. But we're just kind of completing that island, but not encroaching on any other circulation at all.
How are you addressing stormwater quality for the development?
This is also a fee-in-lu site because of the contamination as well.
So then how will, so I get the fee-in-lu of structure. Where will, will it just be sheet flow then towards Clear Creek?
It's, all the storm sewers will be designed, I think we're shooting for the 10-year storm, and we've worked with the city engineer on approximately how much they want routed to each of the eventual lift stations that it will serve.
Okay.
And we've split it up basically exactly like they've wanted it. I think they wanted a little bit more going to the west than to the north, so that's what we've done. But in general, it's going to kind of fill up when it really floods, and then it just kind of settle back down, but the buildings will be high and dry.
I was there in 2008, it was scary.
Yeah, I bet. And a lot of those buildings were probably underwater, because I know a lot of them are under the floodplain elevation.
23 was worse.
No other questions at this time, I'll let Fessler talk.
I should take this time to note, this is a mixed-use development, so there is multifamily residential on this, there's retail, there's restaurants, and there's structured parking as well as surface parking.
Good evening, I'm Mackia Mosley, I'm the architect. I'm with BKV Group. I just want to briefly talk about the buildings. You can't hear? Okay. Can you hear me now? No?
Yeah.
Can you, can you hear me? Can you? Sorry. So, the main building, the one in the middle, can you hear me? Okay, the one in the middle is a six-story, what we call wrap building. The apartment building, apartment units wrap around the structural, structure parking garage. Dave, can you go to the colored rendering site plan? Right, okay. So the white box in the middle, that's the main building, and you see the garage, parking garage to the left. And this building is a six-story, has 294 apartment units. And in addition to the apartment units on the ground floor, there are the leasing office, indoor amenities spaces such as fitness center, the flexible spaces that students can go study or relax or have get-together. And also along where number seven is, that's a retail and restaurant space along the front facade of the building. And the garage has 560-plus parking spaces, and you add the surface parking throughout the site, which are about 300. We have more than 800 parking spaces for this project. And more toward the second street, in that plaza in front of that main building, there is a single-story retail building where number seven is, and also close to the main entry of the project to the northeast corner, the L-shaped building, that's a single-story restaurant building. And along the First Avenue, there are townhome units running north and south. And also along the backside of the site, those are all townhome units. Each townhome unit has three-story and two attached garages. And there are 29 of those units, and those are geared more toward graduate students. And there are also a nice plaza and pool courtyard, and landscape architect Colin can talk about those.
Okay, hi everyone. Colin Coontz, Director of Urban Planning and Landscape Architecture with BKV Group. This, we're very excited about this project and the positive impact it could have. As Dave mentioned, the trails, the Nature Trail and then Clear Creek Trail, this project really becomes kind of a connection for both of those. And the landscape design really capitalizes on this being a pedestrian destination and puts that pedestrian public destination at the front of the project, really becomes the front door of the project, and, you know, in my opinion, roots the project in the context. And so that's really how the landscape design was approached and what this concept aims to do. A lot of those great public spaces are out front, and I can briefly go over some of them, and happy to answer any questions in detail. But we've got sculptural flexible lawns, we've got dining decks, we've got great variety of active and passive spaces, people to meet friends, places that are large enough to hold, you know, a small 5K start, a small farmer's market or a concert, but also intimate spaces where people can study, be protected by the weather, have a nice meal in a comfortable place. And so really, really aiming to have a wide range of spaces, but also be that front door. So plenty of green, plenty of inviting spaces for people to stay, meet and connect, and so, yeah.
So the south side of that property butts against the rail line through there. How are we going to address kind of masking that off, not only for sound issues, but, you know, sometimes the vegetative value of a rail corridor isn't great. I see you have a few shrubs back there, but?
Yeah, that's a good question, and there is some grade difference of that rail, and so that helps. And I can, and let our civil engineer also speak to this as well, but there is a grade difference which helps. And that's something we plan to study in further design of how much of that is really screened visually and for sound attenuation. But, yeah, as of right now, we've got a vegetative buffer and hoping that elevation really helps.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else moving forward, we will now close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of rezoning to the CPUD 1 District?
So moved.
Moved by Holderness?
Second.
Seconded by Aaronz. Any discussion or questions?
I'll throw out a little bit of discussion here, because I got to be the wild guy in the crowd. How much low-income housing do we have down there, housing do we have in that area right now?
Right now, we have approximately 40 rental permits.
Through there.
And it may actually be less. The last time I checked, that was approximately a year ago.
So I've heard a lot of discussion with a college-age audience. Will there be some lower-end, more, I shouldn't say lower-end housing, but more affordable housing mixed into this at any point or anywhere in this location?
There was a talk by the client about making some of the units more toward student. I don't know if that talk has proceeded from there, but as far as I know now, we are assuming that this is a student housing building.
And I like that. We may, it may open up other housing that students are currently using for lower-income people. So I do, I like this design. It fits in with Scooters right up the road. They're making this all a very walkable place. That's just something I know that's curling that area, and I just want to make sure that we take that into consideration when we move forward.
I guess I would just comment that this is a very challenging site, and I used to work for the city, and I've worked on this for a lot of years, and it's really underutilized for many years and a kind of an eyesore as one of the main gateways to the east side of the city from the University and City of Iowa City. And so I applaud you for your efforts. This looks like a great project, and I think it'll be a vast improvement to this section of the city.
Yeah, agreed. It'll be great to see this cleaned up.
What, you guys are saying it's not pretty now? If you're a softball fan, it is a little rough area, so it'll be nice to have some eating venues and things like that across from the university athletic complexes.
All right, anything else? All right, we will now vote on the approval of rezoning to the CPUD 1 District. Roll call vote, please. Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaronz?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of the PUDB site plan?
So moved.
Moved by Winman?
Second.
Seconded by?
I'm sorry, Chairperson Taylor, that should be the PUDA. That's a typo.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right, approval of the PUDA site plan. So moved by Winman and seconded by Fessler. Any further discussion?
Dave, what about the existing buildings to the west of this project? Between that and the creek, will those remain for the time being?
For the time being, those will remain. It could potentially be a Phase 2, but as of right now, this is the scope. This is all going to be done as one phase, in Phase 1, and maybe down the road.
Okay, fingers crossed.
We will now vote on the approval of the PUDA site plan. Roll call vote, please. Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaronz?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Do I have a motion to consider recommending approval of the preliminary plat?
So moved.
Moved by Holderness?
Second.
Seconded by Aaronz. Anything else? Okay, we will now vote on the approval of the preliminary plat. Roll call vote? Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Kasserly?
Aye.
Aaronz?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Agenda item number seven. We have a zoning code amendment pursuant to the City of Corleville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 165. Do I have a motion to consider approval of the zoning code amendment?
So moved.
Moved by Friedhoff.
Second.
Seconded by Holderness. Any discussion on this one?
Would you like me to do an overview on this? All right, so we're proposing to remove the R0 residential district, strike that from the ordinance. We don't have this district. It's actually an estate, large lot-type development that's intended to be able to support through city sewer but also septics. The city will never develop under this district, and if somebody ever did want to develop to this low of a density, they can certainly accomplish it under the R1 single-family district. The changes also address recent state code changes, which prohibit cities from regulating no-impact home-based businesses. Essentially, this preemption removes cities' abilities to permit or license in-home businesses, including childcare facilities that meet a number of criteria. The sale of goods and services need to be lawful. The total number of on-site employees cannot exceed the occupancy limits of the home. Cannot generate on-street parking or substantial increase in traffic. Has to be incidental to the residential use of the property. Cannot be visible from, or needs to incur inside the residence or in the yard of the residence. And no signage, and of course, everything still needs to conform with fire building and life safety codes. Another notable change is, state code has also prohibited cities from regulating fireworks sales in commercial and industrial districts. You may recall, prior to this year, we limited the sales to industrial districts only. You may recall, prior to this year, we limited the sales to industrial districts only, just because the nature of those sales and accessory items and storage containers, things like that, were best suited in industrial districts. You'll notice that that went into effect in April, I believe, end of April, and we had a number of fireworks tents throughout the city. So, we're addressing that on these changes as well. We have more detailed and comprehensive design guidelines for new commercial industrial buildings and additions. And city code has also never formally addressed parking of RVs and boats. We've always just considered it outdoor storage, so our new language will actually allow one recreational vehicle or boat to be stored outside in a side yard or a rear yard on an improved surface connected to the driveway. Again, it has to be maintained in good condition, and it has to be registered to the owner of the property. Another big change is accessory structures will be allowed in rear and side yards. Prior to this, we only allowed them in rear yards. Most communities I've worked and lived in, it's pretty typical to allow a shed, a detached garage, a swimming pool, those things in a side yard. Those will need to be setback. Accessory structures need to be setback, a minimum of 10 feet from the front of the residence or primary structure on the home, just so the home or the principal building still remains the primary aesthetic along the street. We're also going to be moving the side yard setbacks to six feet, and the rear yard setback to six feet. Previous, the minimum was three feet on the side, or I'm sorry, three feet on the rear and six feet on the side. You could go, you could go as close as three feet on a side yard if you were more than 60 feet from the front property line. The trouble with that is three feet doesn't even allow you enough room to do maintenance on that side of a building without having to encroach into a neighbor's yard. So, we're just moving everything to six feet. In my two years, that hasn't been an issue with the placement of any accessory structures. And we are also going to allow front yard setback adjustments. This is actually going to allow staff to administratively adjust front yard setback homes for infill development. So when we might have infill development or a new home being located in established neighborhoods like Corleville, what I can do is take the average of the front yard setback of the adjacent buildings, and that can establish the allowed front yard for that. It's just to help facilitate investment and infill development in these areas. It's fairly simple, and it just removes a hurdle for, for people. That's, that's all I have.
Any questions?
I have a question for Dave. On number five, on the storing of the parking, parking of the RVs and the boats?
Mm-hmm.
It says in the side yard.
Mm-hmm.
Can that, will that be allowed in front of the structure?
No, anything, anything parallel and even with the front of the structure between the home and the street is considered a front yard.
Okay. All right. All right, good. Thanks for clarifying that. Because I noticed it addressed that in six, but it didn't address it in that in five. So, and then I guess my other question is, in four, can you just give us a few examples of some of the standards that are required for the new commercial buildings?
Sure. So, we're going to be including transparency requirements for glass. We are going to be allowing stone, masonry, EPHIS, stucco, other materials, however, we are going to require in commercial buildings, EPHIS or stucco not be used in the bottom four feet. We're requiring a little bit more articulation in buildings, so we're not going to have any long lengthy wall planes on buildings. Those are going to need to be interrupted by either changes in material, changes in profile of the building wall, things of those, things of that nature.
That's great, thank you.
Yep. Hopefully this helps, actually provide a little bit more direction to designers when they are designing buildings in Corleville, so it'll make going through that site plan review process clearer and hopefully better.
All right. Anything else? Okay. We will now vote on the approval of the zoning code amendment. We have a roll call vote please.
Casserly?
Aye.
Arons?
Aye.
Winman?
Aye.
Friedhoff?
Aye.
Fessler?
Aye.
Holderness?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Friedhoff.
Seconded.
Seconded by Arons. This meeting is now adjourned.